Carr.
Here.
Carr, here, Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here, Osling.
Here.
Osling, here, Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here, Johnson.
Here.
Johnson, here, Frosto. Frosto, absent, Thompson. Thompson, absent, Johansson. Johansson, absent, Holly. Here. Holly, here, Pulos. Here. Pulos, here, Vieira.
Here.
Vieira, here, Malado. Malado, absent, Rita.
Here.
Rita, here, Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Head, brother.
Thank you very much. We move on to the next presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve City Council Mayor's 38th June 14, 2016. We got a, uh, motion by, uh...
Me.
...Slattery and... It's been a long day all day. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Can you, council?
You are all welcome to this evening's meeting. Your reply, you reminded, the purpose of the meeting is for the deliberation of the council and the mayor regarding city governance and business. If you intend to speak, please once recognized by the mayor, approach the podium, announce your name and address. Please be further advised that comments may be limited to three minutes or forwarded to the appropriate city personnel for follow-up.
Thank you very much, council. Anyone, please? They can come up. Any comments? The microphone, please. Yeah?
Yeah.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle Hollyfield, and I represent Tracy Bird at 2848 West 140th Place in Blue Island. And we're following up on a request to use the washroom facilities at the Blue Island Rec Center. And, um, and if all possible, for the sprinklers to be turned on on Saturday so that we can have a barbecue, an old-school California Gardens barbecue. This is the second year.
So this will be, what day, July the 2nd?
Correct.
I think the sprinklers will have no problem, correct?
Correct. We could get the splash pad turned on. There is an issue with the inside of the bathrooms. And I believe when we spoke, or our representative spoke with you, it was to get, like last year, to get the porta-potties from the other ground.
Okay.
But the splash pad, we could put on.
Okay. So we'll get our own porta-potty, like we did last year?
Please.
Okay. All right, this is not a problem.
We need a council approval for the use of... No? Okay, we're fine.
Thank you. Thank you very much!
Anyone else? Mr. Stevo? All right, we move on to the next presentation. Awards and plaques for the police officer requirement and having one special year. I want to meet Ian's on front of the podium, please. You want to take the police officer?
Deputy Chief, you have the mic?
Okay. Real quickly, Officer of the Year, I think Detective Sergeant Pabulniak. This award is about dedication and service. I've known Frank Hugh for 25 years. In the whole time I've known him, he's always been very dedicated to this job. I would tell you, there are multiple reasons why I would have given him this award, but I could go on all night. As far as dedication, I know Sergeant Pabulniak is very aggressive when it comes to following up on leads. He's just done an excellent job with the Detective Division. His dedication to the profession is above and beyond. Whether it's following up on a serious crime or ensuring that the needs of his men under him are met, he's always thinking of ways to improve Police Department and the city of Blue Island. He has a great work ethic, probably one of the best work ethics I've ever known. I witnessed him many times taking on a task and not rest until the task is completed, often at his own time. You know, I could give an example of him taking over the Detective Division during a personnel shortage. He made it work, and he just did an outstanding job taking on a tremendous caseload and making arrests that was just, and he never complained about it. He always had a "I will go," a can-do attitude, which you, it should be rewarded, that kind of attitude. Frank is a great leader, and he is a true policeman. And I can't thank him enough for the outstanding job he has done for the Police Department. Thank you.
I'm going to refer to you as Officer Pot.
This point, boss.
Okay. Officer of the Year presented to Frank Pabulniak in recognition of your dedication to law enforcement and the public service you do for the city of Blue Island. It's presented by the Blue Island Police Department, by the city, by the elected officials here, and by the people who are out here. Again, congratulations. Deep, deep honor to present this to you, to your family who's here. Much deserved, and many, many more years. Many more years.
I'd like to thank everybody. It's very humbling to receive an award like this, and many other officers on our department that are probably more deserving than I am of this. But as a leader, you're only as good as the men that work under you, with you. And I have a wonderful Detective Division, and because of them, I'm receiving this award today. This isn't my doing, this is my men. They make me look good. And on behalf of the city, it's been wonderful to me and my family for 22 years, and thank you very much.
Want to get the family out for a picture?
Yeah.
Come on. Come on, come on. There's more people, come on. Families come close together. There we go. You get us all in there?
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Attorney. Chief Quintero? You have the... Thanks, honor.
I'm glad Dave Haywood has come out up here since he's our Fire Fighter of the Year. Dave, also known as Bubba to me, was at the firehouse before I was. I've been around almost 32 years now. He came up to the firehouse, his dad was fire chief, his dad was a firefighter when I was there. I'm going to steal some words from his lieutenant's letter that he wrote. What I do is I ask the lieutenants, who work in a day, daily basis with these guys, to kind of give me an idea of who deserves this award and why they think they deserve it. So this is actually written by Lieutenant Coons, and it pretty much hits on everything. I really think that Bubba's a great choice, Dave, I'm sorry. Just some of the key words that he used were hard worker, he says he's always willing to do what has to be done, he always goes above and beyond. He's also instrumental in keeping our stations looking good. A lot of the work at the firehouse, repairs and things are done by the on-duty guys. Bubba's one of the guys that does a ton of work around the firehouse, mounting brackets and the rigs that need to be done, whatever needs to be done. He's like the jack of all trades and does everything. He's led projects to make the stations more comfortable for the crews, continues to take on extra projects to that effect. He's a leader, he's also stepped up as an acting officer. Last year, I know they all know, we had a lot of new guys. I think we had 11 guys on probation at one time. The senior man on his shift was out on an injury leave, so Dave stepped into that position. So whenever the lieutenant wasn't there, Dave took over, and he was kind of new at it, and did an awesome job in leading these young guys. It also says that Dave is always improving on his skills as an acting officer by asking questions, giving input, the officer's knowledge and skills to the newer members, he's an example to them and always treats them with respect. He's a good organizer and shows pride in being a member of the Blue Island Fire Department. He's been a mentor to a lot of these younger guys and continues to be, and I know a lot of the younger guys really appreciate that, and I appreciate that. And the last thing that Lieutenant Coons put in his letter is, he creates a positive work environment, shows a genuine desire to do a good job, he's a great example for the newer members. Dave's leadership, his desire, his pride in being a member, his positive presence, and his ability to always step up to the challenges are some of the reasons that Dave should be Fire Fighter of the Year. That pretty much sums up everything I have to say. Congratulations, Dave.
It reads as follows. Firefighter of the Year presented to David A. Haywood Jr. In recognition of your dedication to the fire service and the public you serve, presented by the Blue Island Fire Department, June the 28th, 2016. Again, as mayor of the city of Blue Island, as the elected officials who are here, the residents here, congratulations on this award. Hopefully many, many more to come. Again, thank you for doing all your service that you do while you're working, when you're not on duty, again, and continue doing such a good thing for the people of the city of Blue Island. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you very much. Can I have another? We'll do it the same way, so we can do this one, sorry. It's all right, we'll get them up here. Wait. All right. What a beautiful family, huh? Guys? Thank you, congratulations. Last but not least, 911 Dispatcher of the Year.
Okay, so traditionally at this time of the year, we also hand out the Telecommunicator of the Year Award. We're going to be doing things a bit differently this year in light of some recent circumstances in history in the 911 center. About seven months ago, we started a transition in the center. The main goal of this transition was to raise the level of service to the police and fire departments we serve, but more importantly to you, to the citizens and public we serve in their greatest time of need. What we set out to do at that time is to create, revamp, and update policies, procedures, training manuals, to increase the level of training for all the telecommunicators, both full-time and part-time, to reinforce the command structure by increasing and improving upon the level of supervision in the center, to revamp the administration of the center and those processes, and basically to become more effective, become more effective and efficient overall. With, again, the end goal being to increase the level of service to you. That brings us to why we're giving this award in this fashion today. Going back seven months ago, we pretty much immediately began to increase the expectations and to communicate that to our telecommunicators, and we began to enforce those, increase standards. The result of that is, as with many things, sometimes you have to take a step back or two steps back before you can begin moving forward, and that absolutely happened in our center. We lost some staffing for a myriad of reasons. We were actually down 40% of our full-time staff at one point. And what that means is, you know, when you hold a job where those consuls have to be manned 24/7, can't take a shift off, that means that those gaps were, had to be filled by those remaining in the positions. So, there was a point where we only had seven full-time dispatchers in addition to a supervisor. And those people were working, I can tell you from not exaggerating, multiple, multiple 16-hour shifts, sitting at those consuls, answering 911 calls, working days off, working strings of days in a row on 12-hour shifts. They really took a beating for a little while, and not only did they sacrifice, but I know their families sacrificed during that time. So, we felt it appropriate, in lieu of the Telecommunicator of the Year Award, to give out a unit citation to all the full-time individuals that were there for the majority of that time period where we had to fill that gap. So they're very deserving of it. I'm going to have them come up now. Not everybody that's present, absentee, or Jenny Bogas, Donna Luna... Sorry?
Daryl.
Daryl Demrow, and Kenisha Rodriguez.
And Jill.
And Jill, thank you. Jill Caldwell. So we're missing five. We have four here, if you guys see, come up. What I'm going to do is I'm going to hand out a certificate, have them stand to my left, and then I'll have the mayor read the actual plaque, and then if you get older applause, we'll applause for all at once. So first of all, Supervisor Jim McGeeber. Tina Nedbit. Aaron Boneface. And Lorela Nola.
This is a big one. Latinx, well deserved. 911 Unit Citation. The following telecommunicators are being awarded this unit citation for their dedication, and I repeat, their dedication to the Blue Island 911 Center, under extremely difficult circumstances. Again, Supervisor James McGeeber, Genevieve Bogas, Donna Luna, Tina Nedbit, Joe Caldwell, Daryl Demrow, Aaron Boneface, Maria Vargas, Kenisha Rodriguez. Their continued commitment to service and professionalism is the foundation for the consistent standard of excellence displayed by, and I stress, the Blue Island 911 Center, dated today, June 28th, 2016. Again, I'm going to present this to all of you. Much well deserved. Let's hear it again for them, for the telecommunicators.
And his family?
Yeah, family. I know there's families here, come up.
I guess you all know it. If you don't know, behind that window, it's the 911 Center, there's personnel working as we speak in those... People go on. Come on in.
Come on in, who's going?
Why don't we do this? I'm going to do something different here. Like a signboard. Okay, congratulations, all of you. Alderman Johnson, will you come down to the podium, please? The next on the agenda is a resolution. In fact, it was Alderman Jesse Johnson who brought the information regarding this... What's the young lady? To our attention. It's a resolution dedicated to Jesse M. Ward Johnson. And it reads as follows. A resolution honoring the accomplishments and the legacy, and I'll stress, the legacy, of Jesse May Ward Johnson. Whereas the Blue Island community lost a strong, generous, and faithful servant on Saturday, June the 18th, 2016, with the death of Jesse May Ward Johnson. And whereas Jesse May Ward was born on June the 11th, 1917, in Norwood, Georgia, and for over 79 years was a devoted wife to her husband Willie Johnson and mother to her three children. And whereas Jesse and her husband Willie moved to Blue Island, Illinois in 1962, where she helped to raise and educate family members and children of church members who needed for assistance and care. She was generous with all her resources, and she encouraged all with whom she interacted to follow the path of goodness. And whereas Jesse retired from a career in nursing from Rush Presbyterian St. Luke Medical Center after 27 years of faithful, devoted, and valuable service without a single day of absence. And whereas Jesse May Johnson served at St. Andrews Temple Church of God in Christ, where she became president of the youth choir, president of the missionary unit, a Sunday school teacher for over 14 years, a member of the trustee board for 12 years, a home and foreign mission teacher, and pastors aides president. And whereas she also was given many awards for her devotion and leadership, and was appointed to serve as Mother of the District in 2003, her certificate of appointment proclaiming, "The laborer is worthy of this award." Chapter 1 Timothy, verses 5 through 18. Whereas Jesse had a love for gardening, and she was awarded the Blue Island Beautiful Yard and Garden Award by Mayor John E. Rieden. And whereas Jesse was a wife, mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, loyal servant, and law-abiding citizen of Blue Island, and now therefore be it resolved by myself, the mayor, and the city council of the city of Blue Island, County of Cook, and State of Illinois, do by here offer our most sincere and heartfelt condolences to her family and friends, past, hopefully, the 28th day of June, 2016. Do we have a motion? By Alderman Slattery, second by Alderman Osling. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. A well-deserved resolution. Thank you.
Any bids, city clerk?
No bids.
City clerk's business?
Yes, I need a motion to approve a request from the Access Community Health Network. They have to host a summer community health fair on Saturday, July 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Do we have a motion? Alderman Pulos, second by Alderman Donahue. Any questions? Roco, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, need a motion to approve a request for a block party to be held on Monday, July 4th on Edison Street, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Do we have a motion? By Alderman Town Holly, second by Alderman Carr. Any questions? Roco, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you. Anything else? That's it. City Treasurer? I will report, your honor. Thank you. City Attorney?
Yes, we have one motion to approve a side letter of agreement between the FOP and the city. It's to revise certain contract language that was ambiguous and that we've been trying to resolve some grievances by looking at the language. And the subject is multiple interpretations, so we reached an agreement as to what the language should read based on the parties' intent of negotiation. So this letter of agreement basically corrects the language in the existing contract, so it doesn't really alter it substantially, other than to just resolve the disagreements.
Do we have a motion by Alderman Osling, second by Alderman Johnson? Any questions? Roco, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you. Anything else, council? Committee reports, committee development committee?
No report, your honor. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, July 20th, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council Chamber.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
No report. I just wanted to make an announcement that the July 5th Finance Committee meeting is canceled because there will not be a quorum, and our next meeting will be on July 19th, 2016, at 6:30 p.m. Also, I have an amendment for a resolution approving engineer for Phase 3 construction of the Chandler Street Bridge project and authorizing the execution and submission of related documents.
Do we have a motion, a second by Alderman Kevin Donahue? Any questions? Roco, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you. Anything else, open?
No, that's it.
Public Health and Safety Committee?
No report, your honor. Our next meeting will be July the 12th at 6:00 p.m. here in the East Annex.
Thank you very much. Municipal Services Committee?
Thank you, your honor. No formal report. Our next meeting's going to be July, Wednesday, July 13th. The only item I have for consideration is a motion of approval of a soccer lease agreement for the Zolos JT Soccer Club.
Is there a motion by Alderman here? Or is there a question? Is it a motion?
A motion.
Motion, second by Alderman here. Any questions?
Yes. Alderman Donahue, can you repeat the timing for the next meeting?
Sure, Dex. It's going to be Wednesday, July 13th, at 6:00 p.m. here in the East Annex.
So we got a motion, we got a second. Roco, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else, open?
That's it, your honor. Thank you.
Judiciary Committee?
Yes, your honor. Judiciary Committee met on June 2nd, 2016. The meeting was called to order at 7:14 by Chairman Frosto. In attendance were Alderman Holly, Alderman Pulos, and Alderman Frosto. Absent were Alderman Slattery and Alderman Vayra. Also present was Attorney Reins. There was no public comment. There were no handicap applications to be reviewed. Under the codification review, Title IX, General Regulation Chapters 90 to 93, there were two changes regarding apiaries. The Finance Department, Finance Committee agreed on the permit fee to be $5, and there was language added regarding violation fees ranging from $5 to $500 for failure to properly upkeep an apiary. Also discussed were resident complaints regarding animals being boarded in the town, such as pigs, peacocks, and other exotic animals. It's decided for this to be reviewed in the current section as well and draft language that includes more than cats and dogs.